I see that he's on Zoom. Vice President Barris? He's waving hello. Counselor Collins.
Here.
Counselor Knight, Counselor Scarpelli, Counselor Singh, President Morel.
Present.
And Counselor Carviallo.
Present. Seven in the affirmative, please rise and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and justice for all. Okay. Motion, orders, and resolutions. Two, two, zero, five, zero, offered by Counselor Knight. Be it so resolved that the Memphis City Council extend its appreciation gratitude in well wishes to the Salvato family, owners and proprietors of Espresso Pizza, for efforts in support of the community spanning over four decades in the city of Memphis, and be it further resolved that the Salvato family be recognized by the city of Memphis by way of dedicating the corner of Winterup and Boston Avenue in recognition of the Salvato family. Counselor Knight.
Mr. President, thank you very much, and I know that you and I were supposed to be co-sponsors on this. I apologize for leaving you off. I know that you and I spoke about this earlier in the week.
All right.
But yes, the Salvato family are owners and operators of Espresso Pizzeria on Boston Avenue, Mr. President, that just closed very recently. And for 40 years, they operated at that corner, and they were one of the first businesses in this community to get an extended hours license. And they really set a trend up there. They serviced my neighborhood that I grew up in, as well as I'm sure Counselor Collins will tell us, touch university population for a great deal. But they've always been a great neighbor and a great partner in the community. And after 40 years, they're hanging up the aprons and the pizza wheel. So I think it goes without saying that they deserve some recognition for the community building that they did here in this city. And they've offered this community, Mr. President. They're great people, a great family. I had the opportunity to grow up with some nephews, Salvato nephews and the Davises as well. Great kids, great people, all giving to this community now. So with that being said, I'd ask my counsel colleagues to support this resolution and send it to the administration for the request.
Thank you. And personally myself, I want to thank Council for putting me on with this. I don't think there's anybody that lives either went to Tuff's or lives in probably most areas of West Memphis that haven't had Espresso Pizza. I mean, Friday, Saturday nights, they used to turn the phone off. They, those, the calls were coming in so fast and furious. I think at one point, they had like 17, 18 drivers on the weekend. So good family. Been there for many years, and I just want to thank them for all the things they've done for our communities.
Mr. President.
Counselor Scarpelli.
Thank you again. Thanks for bringing this forward, Counselor Knight, Counselor. Counselor President, this is, this is a family that, again, you have to celebrate because although they owned a successful business, they were always one of the first businesses to give back to the youth of the community. So often, you go in there and you'd see a new plaque, Espresso's representing and sponsoring another youth team or activity. So I've had the pleasure to know a lot of this Salvato family. And I know that we have, they've done so much for our community. And I would support and second Counselor Knight's motion. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, any further discussion? Joe, on the motion by Counselor Knight and Counselor Carviallo, seconded by Counselor Scott Pelley. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Barris.
Yes.
Counselor Collins.
Yes.
Counselor Knight.
Yes.
Counselor Scarpelli.
Yes.
Counselor Singh.
President Morel.
Yes.
Counselor Carviallo.
Yes, seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. Motion passes. Two, two, zero, five, one, offered by Counselor Knight. Be it resolved that the city, the Memphis City Council require recordings of all city boards and commissions who are conducting proceedings virtually on the city website for no less than 36 months, and be it further resolved that the city solicitor provide a draft ordinance requiring such, requiring such for council deliberation. Counselor Knight.
Mr. President, thank you very much. I've gotten a number of complaints recently from members of the community seeking copies of minutes or copies of meetings related to especially the Cannabis Advisory Commission, as well as the Historic Commission. And these documents or records are not available readily on the website. So after multiple calls, I thought it might make sense for us to reach out to the administration and ask them to take the appropriate steps to ensure that this material gets posted publicly and transparently, and that the council take the appropriate steps to ensure that this is a standard and a norm, not an anomaly.
Thank you.
Second.
Any further discussion? Clerk, anybody wants to speak?
No hands, no hands raised.
Counselor Singh.
All right, both in terms of, both in terms of transparency and in terms of community participation. I think this measure is important. I also think it's helpful for our community when we have more people participating so they can give us their ideas and help us reach more innovative solutions. So I definitely support this.
Yeah. Okay, so on the motion by Counselor Knight, seconded by Counselor Scott Pelley. No further discussion, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President.
I'm sorry?
Mr. President.
Vice President Barris, I don't have a camera, so just speak up if I don't see you.
You're all right. I would just, if Counselor Knight would be so amenable to amend this to include that minutes be posted even if the meetings are occurring in person.
We certainly have no problem with that, sir.
Good, yeah.
Thank you.
So on the motion by Counselor Knight, seconded by Counselor Scott Pelley, as amended by Vice President Barris. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Barris.
Yes.
Counselor Collins.
Yes.
Counselor Knight.
Yes.
Counselor Scarpelli.
Yes.
Counselor Singh.
Yes.
President Morel.
Yes.
Counselor Carviallo.
Yes. Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. Motion passes. Two, two, zero, five, two, offered by Counselor Knight. Be it so resolved that the Memphis City Council need an executive session for the purpose of discussing the administration's data and IT vulnerabilities as identified in the 11122 Memphis Transcript Article. Counselor Knight.
Mr. President, thank you very much. Yes, yet again, a nice personnel issue has made its way into the newspaper that's identified a number of issues that are going on here in City Hall. One of those issues, I believe, would be an IT vulnerability. It's my understanding that our IT director, after 24 years of employment in the city of Memphis with an exemplary record, was removed from his position based upon some certain IT vulnerabilities that the council's not been made aware of. This is very concerning to me, Mr. President, because if there are IT vulnerabilities, similar to what we saw in the past, the administration would disclose to us when the number of personal information was taken from the city website maybe nine or 10 months ago. It just raises cause for concern, number one, and it also raises cause for liability for the city. And if there's going to be a liability that's placed upon the city, it's going to end up costing the city money. The council should know about it because we're the steward of the taxpayer at all. So with that being said, Mr. President, I'd ask that this motion be moved forward, that we set up an executive session with the city administration for us to discuss these IT vulnerabilities to see what steps we need to take to ensure that the personal information and data of the taxpayers in this community is protected appropriately.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
President, if I could.
President Morel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I support this resolution. And I can just work, just to make sure that this notice is narrowly worded because if we do, if we were to, we don't want to, if we were to venture into the personnel, then we would have to make sure that we're inviting the proper people. So making sure it's worded in a way that we're getting the update on the IT vulnerabilities and not in a personnel sense is my opinion. I just need to make sure it's properly noticed.
Thank you. Any further discussion? So on the motion by Counselor Knight, seconded by Counselor Scott Pelley. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Barris.
Yes.
Counselor Collins.
Yes.
Counselor Knight.
Yes.
Counselor Scarpelli.
Yes.
Counselor Singh.
Yes.
President Morel. President Morel.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Thank you. Counselor Carviallo.
Yes, seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. Motion passes. Two, two, zero, five, three, offered by Counselor Knight. Be it so resolved that the Memphis City Council will establish a subcommittee on litigation. Counselor Knight.
Mr. President, thank you very much. Litigation and representation has been the topic of discussion most of this term so far with the president. For the last four or five weeks, that's all we've been talking about is litigation and representation. And recently, this council had passed a money bill to amend fiscally a budget to allow the mayor's private legal counsel to really have an open checkbook for billing litigation. And when we look at what's going on here in the community and you think about the litigation that's pending, and the amount of money that's been appropriated, and whether or not that amount of money is going to be able to stretch to cover the issues that are in dispute right now, it raises some concern for me financially. So when you think about the more than 25 labor judges that are against the city right now, when you think about the 340 developments that the city's fighting right now, that doesn't look like we're fighting a winning battle. When you look at the potential issue with the Cannabis Advisory Commission in the conflict of interest concerning one of the members in the selection committee, it just puts me in a position, Mr. President, to sit here and think about what we're doing with our money and whether or not we should be planning appropriately for future spending. You know, since this term started, I think we've, we spent a lot of dough in four or five weeks. And I'm hoping that, you know, we can kind of responsibly manage our budgets, our plans, our finances. And I think that by establishing a subcommittee on litigation, that will give the council a better idea going forward as to what steps we need to take to fund the law department in appropriate fashion to ensure that we secure our legal representation moving forward to be sure that we secure our zoning consulting protocol. So I think that this will help us address a number of the concerns and issues that we've raised, Mr. President. May I ask for my counsel colleagues to put?
Thank you. Any discussion on this matter?
Second.
Mr. Clerk, any, Counselor Morel or Counselor Barris?
I can't see any hands raised. I'm just second.
It's me. It's.
Counselor Barris.
Counselor Barris, Vice President Barris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Definitely support the intent of this. If the counselor would be so amenable to refer this to the Committee on Rules and Ordinances, I think we could have the discussion in there by the end of February and get this set up.
Counselor Knight.
If I'm with me, I know that the president's strong pencil also has the power to strike and create the subcommittees as we discussed at the beginning of the session. But I might personally have no objection to what direction this council chooses to go with that direction they want to go for transparency purposes. So be it. I have no problem with that whatsoever.
Then I would move to refer to that Committee on Ordinances and Rules.
So Counselor Barris has moved to move this to where, I'm sorry, Vice President Barris?
The Subcommittee on Ordinances and Rules.
Move to. Subcommittee on Ordinances. So, um, on the motion by Counselor Knight, seconded by Counselor Scott Pelley, and as amended by Counselor Barris, to move this to the Subcommittee on Ordinances. So, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Barris.
Yes.
Counselor Collins.
Yes.
Counselor Knight.
Yes.
Counselor Scarpelli.
Yes.
Counselor Singh.
Yes.
President Morel.
Yes.
Counselor Carviallo.
Yes, seven in the affirmative. Motion passes. At this time, I yield the chair to Counselor Knight.
Thank you, Counselor Carviallo. Give you a moment to get back to your chair. Paper, 22054, offered by Counselor Carviallo. Be it resolved, the Memphis City Council have the mayor start looking into purchasing vehicles for the Memphis Police Department. Most patrol cars are now four plus years old with high mileage. Counselor Carviallo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this is something, it's been discussed many, many, many times in the city. I think, what, I think four years ago, we purchased a whole bunch of new cars, and all those cars now have over 100,000 miles on it. I remember at the time, we talked about setting up a plan where we'd be purchasing cars every year. So we're not at a point right there where we have to go out and buy seven or eight cars. And again, that plan never, never materialized. So at this point, I'm asking us, I'm asking the administration to set up a plan to buy police cars every year. No, you don't have to buy 10 a year, but if you move two or three every year, we're not in the G we're in now. So we don't have all these cars sitting there with hundreds of thousand miles. Even though we have an in-house mechanic, we're just spending money repairing cars because these are cars that run 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So I asked the administration to look into this purchase, especially where cars are in high demand right now. It may take you longer than normal to even maybe even find a car if there aren't any police cars available. So I asked the mayor to look into this and for the administration to come up with a plan that we're constantly purchasing cars every year, one or two at a time, so we don't have to do this backlog of waiting to do this.
Thank you for introducing this. I know there are constituents out there who may be skeptical, right, of given national trends or national discussions. But I think we should look at the history here in our city, and we should look at the fact that our cars are over 100,000, you know, the mileage is over 100,000.
Those are the new ones.
Yeah. And, and so, and 100,000, for clarity, is usually the median of where cars start to be, patrol vehicles start to be replaced. And so in order, you know, I think this is a reasonable request, although if the council would be so amenable, if you'd be able to amend this to say that we come up with a, that the city administration come up with a complete capital plan, so that it's a.
I don't have a problem with us coming up with a complete capital plan. That'll take some time.
Of course, yeah.
But, you know, but I'd like to come up with a plan just for this. But like I say, I don't have a problem with this being part of a capital plan.
Great. And as a second amendment of mine would be to make sure that we are exploring patrol vehicle policies. I, this is something I've done a little bit of research on, just looking into this. It seems that in municipalities across the country, the cities have negotiated deals with police unions, with the police officers, where, you know, the police have a little bit more agency and a little bit more initiative. And this research has shown that the longevity of patrol vehicles is longer and that cities save up on costs a little bit more. I'm talking about cities. Miami is a very big example of one, but these are, these policies are pretty common in the Midwest and the South. And I would just ask that the city administration explore some of these policies. We don't have to adopt anything, but I think it'd be worth our time to explore.
Right, no problem.
Mr. President, if I could.
To Chief, let's do this. Counselor Scott Pelley, just a moment.
Let's counsel Morel.
Counselor Morel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counselor Carviallo, for bringing this forward. I'm curious, I would like to amend if you'd be amenable, just to also include any updates, get an update from the administration on seeking hybrid or EV vehicles to meet these needs. I know I brought it up, both budgets. The chief has said it's something he's looking into. I'm just curious, any progress we've had on that?
That's no problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Counselor Carviallo, for bringing this forward today. I think this resolution is important. Obviously, we need to make sure that every city vehicle is a safe vehicle. Support measures to ensure of that. I also want to thank Counselor Singh, President Morel, for their amendments. You know, of course, as we all know, resources are finite, needs are many. So I support, you know, I'd be interested to see this purchase plan, a phased-in purchasing plan in the context of an overall capital budget, just to see how it interacts with other funding priorities, including other funding priorities within the MPD, which I know are many at this point. I also wanted to note, you know, kind of to President Morel's point. Of course, yearly vehicle purchases, even if they're phased in, they're no small thing environmentally. And, you know, there is a huge emissions cost baked into high-volume vehicle manufacturing, you know, even for EV vehicles. So regardless of how this goes forward, obviously, patrol cars are a bit of a non-negotiable. But I think that that's something that I'd really like to see acknowledged and accounted for in our overall path to net-zero emissions. So just wanted to note that for the record. Regardless of how we go forward, I think that'd be a valuable thing for us to, for the administration to consider in their purchase plan of these vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think Counselor Collins made a good statement. You know, every city vehicle should be a safe vehicle, and I would just like to, if folks are comfortable with this as an amendment, just ask, you know, there's been a shift. I remember when I was younger, we actually had patrol cars. They were, they were cars, and now we've moved more to SUVs. And I just would like to amend this to ask, going forward, if the plan is to continue with SUV-sized vehicles and ask why that is.
Counselor Barris, I think that's all they're making for the police departments right at this particular moment. Very few companies make four-door sedans anymore. So the four-door SUV, smaller SUV, is the way of most cars in the country. I said, I don't think most cars, Ford, Ford seems to be the choice of police car, and they no longer make a four-door sedan.
Got it.
That seems to be the trend in police cars throughout the whole country.
Thank you. And I do see the chief of staff has her hand raised.
The chair recognizes the chief of staff, Nina Nazarian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple pieces of information for the council, just as a part of this conversation, just to provide some input. Wanted to make sure that we shared with the council that we have free cash requests coming before the council in March, and that would include two police cruisers. And also, that's consistent with the capital plan. And also, further funding is, has been identified for future years for cruisers as well. But of course, we are also, at the same time, need to go through the capital plan, review the, further review, and update the capital plan at this point. So just also can't really comment too much on the, some of the other comments or questions that have been presented, but certainly electric vehicles sound great. Just need to make sure that we are able to do that. And I can't speak for the chief to see if there are any operational reasons. But, you know, all of those things are items I'm sure that will be taken into consideration. And we can certainly comment on those at the time in which we come before the council to request the funding from free cash.
Counselor Barris. Seconded by Counselor Scott Pelley. The clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Barris.
Yes.
Counselor Collins.
Yes.
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 Yes. Seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative. The motion passes. Council Paper 22055, offered by Counselor Carviallo. Be it resolved, the Memphis City Council requests the administration, please provide the council with the findings of its review of the clerk's office along with all legal costs associated. Counselor Carviallo.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is something that we had discussed last year when the administration did a review of the clerk's office. And they said it was only going to take a couple of weeks, and we're almost at the end of January. And if the, if the administration would be so kind to share the results of those findings where the clerk's office does come under the city council to find, so you can let us know what the findings of the report were. And also, if you could give us the cost, the legal cost associated with that review of the clerk's office.
Second.
On the motion by Counselor Carviallo, seconded by Counselor Barris, will the clerk please call the roll?
Vice President Barris.
Yes.
Counselor Carviallo.
Yes.
Counselor Collins.
Yes.
Counselor Scarpelli.
Yes.
Counselor Singh. President Morel.
Yes.
Counselor Knight.
Yes.
Seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative. The motion passes. Link was to share to Counselor Carviallo.
Thank you, Counselor Knight. Communications from the mayor. Two, two, zero, four, nine, to President Morel and all members of the city council. On behalf of the Community Preservation Committee, I respectfully request and recommend your honor, board to approve the following recommendations of the Community Preservation, Community Preservation Committee. Requesting appropriation of $75,000 from CPA Historic Reserve to the Memphis Fire Department for design and engineering of the windows of three historic fire substations. Requesting the appropriation of $350,236,383 from the CPA Housing Reserve and $118,617 from the CPA Channel Reserve to the Memphis Housing Authority for pre-development designs for the walking court redevelopment. Requesting the appropriation of $148,000 from the CPA Open Space Reserve to the Office of Planning Development Sustainability for the Riverbend Park Remediation Phase Two project. In requesting the appropriation of $54,000 from the CPA Historical Reserve to the Office of Planning Development Sustainability Civic Auditorium and Convention Center Commission for accessibility improvements at the Chevalier Theater. This project will be tracked in the Community Preservation Fund by category housing, historic space, historic open space, and general reserve. Thank you for your cooperation. Respectfully submitted, Mayor Bruno Longo Kern.
Mr. President, if I may.
Counselor Knight.
This is an appropriation request that I support wholeheartedly. I certainly have no problem with the appropriations that are requested here by the administration, in particular, the Walkman Court project. I think we're very lucky to have Jeffrey Driscoll running the Memphis Housing Authority. He's the premier housing authority director in the state of Massachusetts. He's the housing authority director that trains the other housing authority directors across the state. He's done an excellent job. He's really moved our housing authority forward, very similar to the way that Mike Durham has moved that Veterans Office forward. He's done a great job. And in looking at this request, I think this is what the CPA is really intended for. It's a perfect use. So with that being said, I support it wholeheartedly in terms of the, you know, Riverbend Park project and the accessibility improvements to Chevalier Auditorium, again, two items that we've been talking about for a long time, two things that I think are important to this community. So without being said, I might move for approval on the paper.
Second.
Counsel, Vice President Barris.
I was just seconding.
Second, seconded by Counselor Barris. Counselor Collins.
I was also just seconding, but I agree with everything Counselor Knight said. I think these are four extremely worthy projects. Very excited to support them.
Any further discussion? President Morel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I just want to note that for those watching who maybe weren't at our meeting on Wednesday, we did have a meeting on Wednesday on each of these projects with a great overview on all of them. And again, I also wholeheartedly support them. I think it's a great mix of projects. And we did get word from our friends at the CPC that there are other projects that will be forthcoming, that they are still reviewing based on the amount of projects that came in and the amount of funding that is available. So I just want to note that, that there will be more coming because I know if people have been attending those meetings, there's many other very worthy projects. And I look forward to those coming before this body. Thank you.
Thank you. And for myself, thank you. I agree wholeheartedly with Counselor Knight on the, on Mr. Driscoll and the housing. Walking Court, this goes back to the 1960s, and very little money has ever been appropriated there. I'm glad we're finally going to do something with that, bring it up, bring it up to standards. And we'll be adding housing there for people who need it. So again, thank you, Jeff, for the great work you do. And again, all these other projects, as I said, they're all good projects. But I think that one there stands out as the, as the key one of this group. So any further discussion? No, on the motion by Counselor Knight, seconded by Counselor Barris. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Barris.
Yes.
Counselor Collins.
Yes.
Counselor Knight.
Yes.
Counselor Scarpelli. Counselor Singh.
Yes.
President Morel.
Yes.
Counselor Carviallo.
Yes, seven in the affirmative. A motion passes. See, I don't see anything else on the agenda here.
Two committee reports.
Okay, I'm sorry. We have reports of committee. Two, two, zero, one, three. Hold on a second. Mr. Clerk. Two, two, zero, one, three, January 18, 2022. Committee of the Report, Mayor Hope Report. This is in regard to the Election Commission. Joe, on the motion by Counselor Knight for approval, seconded by Counselor Collins. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Barris.
Yes.
Counselor Collins. Counselor Knight.
Yes.
Counselor Scarpelli.
Yes.
Counselor Singh.
Yes.
President Morel.
Yes.
Counselor Carviallo. Counselor Carviallo.
Yes, seven in affirmative, uh, motion passes. Two-two, zero-four-nine, January nineteenth, committee of the whole may report to follow. Mr. Clerk, this was in regards to?
This was in regards to the Community Preservation Act.
Oh, yes, yeah, in regards to the Community Preservation Act, which we just, uh, approved. Uh, motion for approval. Motion for approval by Counselor Scott Pelley, seconded by Counselor Singh. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Barris.
Yes.
Counselor Collins.
Yes.
Counselor Knight.
Yes.
Counselor Scarpelli. Counselor Singh.
Yes.
President Morell.
Yes.
Counselor Carviallo.
Yes, seven in affirmative, another negative motion passes. Counselor Collins.
Mr. President, if I may, uh, motion to take from the table, Papers two-one, six-three-one, two-two, zero-two-three for the purpose of third reading.
Those aren't eligible till next week.
Next week.
Next week?
Two-one.
Not eligible next week.
Not eligible, I think. I'm not, um.
Yeah, February.
It's already February in my mind. It's on.
Yeah.
Mr. President, if I may.
Counselor Biz.
Just before we consider the records, um, just wanted to let everybody know that I'm on Zoom because I tested positive for COVID-nineteen. Um, it is no fun. I am fully vaccinated and boosted, and it still is not fun. Um, was taking precautions, wearing masks everywhere, not going in big crowds. So just wanted to put out a point of note that, you know, the virus is still out there, spreading widely. Um, still not sure how I got it. I've talked to all my close contacts and they're all negative and asymptomatic. So, um, you know, it's out there and, as I said, it's no fun. Um, and, and I tested positive on a rapid test and just wanna make a point that if you test positive on a rapid test in Medford, let the Board of Health know. Um, you can email them, uh, through the city website, email our public health nurse, Sarah Harris, and it just helps to keep the statistics up. Um, so just wanted to let you guys know, I already let all the counselors know and, and the staff that I was around last week, but, uh, just wanted to, to put that message out there. I'm really glad that I'm vaccinated and boosted. Otherwise, I think I would feel a lot worse. And I hope to be back with you in a couple of weeks, uh, in the chamber. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, public participation.